Good evening, Chair. Calls the order legislative session day twenty-five dash zero-two-three. Please join us in standing for the pledge followed by the opening prayer by Councilwoman M. Hoff.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, thank you for bringing us here tonight. Please help us guide this council and our advocate citizens as we work to make the best decisions for our county. As the anniversary of nine-eleven fast approaches, please help us remember that the lives that were lost and the families forever changed. Please also guide and protect the first responders and men and women serving in the armed forces as they work to protect our community, nation, and allies. Please help us see those of our neighbors who are struggling with silent battles. Help us provide chivalry to our fellow man and help us all get home safely tonight. Amen.
Council may have general consent to skip item five on the agenda and return to four thereafter.
Sure.
Thank you. Four, presentation of proclamations, Hartford Living Treasure, Edsel Hank Rector. Councilman Riley?
Yes, shall I make a motion for Edsel Hank Rector to be Hartford Living Treasure?
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Is there any other comment? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mrs. Robert?
Aye.
Mrs. M. Hoff?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Jardano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodell?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Thank you. With seven in the affirmative, zero in the negative, the motion is hereby approved. Five, consideration of petitions, applications, appointments, and nominations, council appointments, Hartford Living Treasure. Again, may I have a motion?
Council President, I move to approve the appointment of Edsel Hank Rector as a Hartford Living Treasure.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Again, it's moved a second to approve the appointment. Is there any other discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mrs. Robert?
Aye.
Mrs. M. Hoff?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Jardano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodell?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Seeing seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, the appointment is hereby approved. At this time, I'd like to call Mr. Rector forward, please. And anyone else that would like to join you?
Making you come by yourself. In a room full of friends and nobody wants to stand with you.
Mayor, you don't want to stand with him? Come on up, he needs you. You've been supporting him for one-hundred-and-ninety-one years. Thirty-three, okay.
Whereas Edsel Hank Rector received the Hartford County Cultural Arts Board recommendation to the Hartford County Council for recognition as a Hartford Living Treasure. And whereas Mr. Rector has dedicated his life to serving Hartford County through an extraordinary blend of public service, education, music, and community involvement, he served as a deputy sheriff for Hartford County for thirty-three years, during which time he earned a master's degree from the University of Baltimore in nineteen-seventy-six. From nineteen-seventy-six to nineteen-eighty-four, Mr. Rector shared his expertise in criminal justice as an instructor at Hartford Community College, Aberdeen Proving Ground, and the University of Baltimore. And whereas Mr. Rector was a charter member of the Churchville Lions Club, serving approximately fourteen years, where he actively supported community functions and outreach. He served as a president of Hartford County Democratic Club, president of Churchville Lions Club, and was enthusiastic participant in the Big M car shows for approximately twenty years. And whereas for twenty-eight years, Mr. Rector performed monthly with his musical group at three Lorian nursing homes, bringing joy and comfort through music to countless residents. He also played gospel music in various local churches during that time. As part of the Hartford County Government Retirees Association, he remains an engaged community member. Now, therefore, we, the County Council of Hartford County, Maryland, on this ninth day of September, two thousand and twenty-five, do hereby proclaim Edsel Hank Rector a Hartford Living Treasure and be it further known that his lifetime experience and contribution to Hartford County community will provide a permanent record which will recall the past, inform the present, and guide the future of Hartford County, and that his memories and history will be recorded by the Hartford County Public Library Oral Historian and will become part of the oral history collection of the library.
Thank you, Tony, for reading that. And Hank, we have a proclamation here for you, but I just want to mention just a few things that I have in common with Hank. He was a law enforcement officer, I was too. He taught criminal justice at Hartford Community College. I also taught at Hartford Community College. He did a lot of work in the community with a nonprofit. I've done the same. But he's got a few things I don't have, and the most important thing that he has and the most apparent you can see is that he has hair and I don't. And so that's a good thing. Also, he played, he opened for Johnny Cash, Patsy Cline, and George Jones. The only thing I play is the radio, but he plays instruments. So Hank, on behalf of Hartford County Council, we have this proclamation that I'm sure you want to hang on your wall, congratulating you as a Hartford Living Treasure. We appreciate everything you did for the community and what you still yet are going to continue for the next ninety-one. Congratulations. And now, we're going to let you talk.
Okay, did I do all those things? No, I really, uh, the, in Hartford Heart magazine, Debbie Umberger interviewed us and all for about two and a half hours, and she couldn't leave. Says, are you sure that you're the only ones doing all this? But anyway, I appreciate it, and Hartford County is my home. And the only thing I'll say, did I tell you that joke? Okay, I'll tell it. Now, some of you older folks, like I'm not, I was on the Cecil TV interview, and we started out, and the guy said, is there anything you'd like to say or have to say? I said, yeah, one thing. I don't like to be around old people. And he says, what? I don't like to be around old people. He says, why? Cause it's catching. He says, I'm not going to touch that. Anyway, that's all in fun, and we played nursing homes and everything, and it's beautiful. I wrote a lot of my songs at the nursing homes. One in particular, I remember, and I asked somebody if I could sing a song here, and they said, no. And I said, okay, well, we'll get by somehow here.
Well, how long is a song? How long is it going to take to sing this song?
Not very long, I don't have my guitar.
Have at it.
Everybody wants to know my guitar.
Just do it without it.
Take me back to the good old days. Take me back a long, long ways, different times and different ways. Take me back to the good old days. Take me back to Mom and Dad, to a life that was good and bad, where memories are there to stay. Take me back to the good old days. Wish I could go back to the good old days, but time has passed, now it's too late. But I still can thank God and pray like I did in the good old days. Wish I could go back just one more time, to a life that was yours and mine, to a long-gone memory. Take me back to the good old days.
There you go.
Mayor, do you want to say anything about your lovely husband? You don't want her to say anything. Thirty-three years, there's a lot of dirt there. I also see Sheriff Baines in the audience. Sheriff, would you like to come up and say anything?
Well, I'd be in trouble if I said no.
Well, I know this young man worked for you at one time, so.
I worked for him, and then he worked for me. No, you left before you worked for me. I forced you. I just want to say that I've known Hank since nineteen-seventy-two, and he's a gentleman, a Christian, a very strong family man, and I would say that there were a lot of things that I learned from him when I was under his command, particularly at the training academy. But I am very pleased to see that he's getting this award. It's well-deserved, and I'm glad to hear that someone from the library is going to be recording an interview with you and is going to be there for posterity, and I wish I was around for many, many years to hear it, but it's not going to work that way. But anyway, congratulations to you and to your family. This is an award well-deserved, and I want to thank the County Council for recognizing, I call them Lieutenant Rector to be respectful, it's, this is one of the best awards that county government can give to any citizen in Hartford County, and Hartford County owes the County Council debt of gratitude for that reason. So, said enough, I'm not going to sing.
All right, can I say a few more words?
I'm sorry?
Now, you're starting to stretch it now.
All right, Hank, we got to wrap it up, but go ahead.
Okay, wrap up. Here we go. Would you hold this for me, please? You see this catalog, it's from Australia. Now, back in nineteen-
Hold your mic up, too.
Back in nineteen-fifty-eight, I went to Nashville and I made a record called, "I'm Going to Let You Go." And evidently, it was a rockabilly song. And some people in England, and my wife was texting, and we had a video on, she does all my videos, and we got a video called, "Life and Times of Hank Rector." Well, this guy, Walker Huwun, in England, he texted her and said, hey, can we do something with Hank Rector? Is he still alive? And she said, yeah. And she said, well, I think we can do something with him. He said, do what? So what he did was, for three months, three months, my wife texts back and forth with this gentleman, and he did a biography of me. And he just so happened to have a friend that had this magazine put it out in Australia. It runs about seventy-five dollars. But anyway, he talked this guy in to put me in it, and he put me on the front page with this song, "I'm Going to Let You Go." And I finally got credit for it. So he put me in, he put a big article in this paper, and as you know, Debbie, Debbie Umberger, did an interview with us, and she did basically the same thing. And I appreciate all that. It all happened in the span of a year, so this sort of tops it.
There you go.
You know? It really does, and I appreciate everything, appreciate all you folks, and any song I can sing, you let me know.
We'll bring you back.
Hank, don't go anywhere. I know the folks who want to come down and take a picture.
Yeah, we can come down, sure.
Here, I'll put that up there so it doesn't get in the picture unless you want to, well, that's more important right now than this is, all right? I know this is worth more, but.
All right, everybody say cheese.
All right, I'm going to need everybody to shift, going this way, we're going to get centered to the background.
There you go.
About one or two more steps. All right, there's going to be flash, it's going to be a little bright, but everybody look at me. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Thank you.
Thanks again, Hank.
Congratulations.
Good song, I enjoyed that.
All right, we'll move on with executive appointments. Human Relations Commission may have a motion, please.
Council President, I move to approve the appointment of Laura Souley.
Sue Hale.
Sue Hale.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Bennett?
It's been moved a second to approve Ms. Souley for the Human Relations Commission. Is there any discussion? I think there's plenty of discussion. Mr. Bennett?
I just wanted to recognize, it's not often that we appoint an eighteen-year-old to one of our boards or commissions, and it's just really, I think, incredible to see someone at eighteen who already was a youth member, then a shadow member, and now taking on a full membership of this board. I think you'd be hard-pressed to find that many eighteen-year-olds who are interested in human relations, but I just think that's really encouraging to see.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Anyone else? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mrs. Robert?
Aye.
Mrs. M. Hoff?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Jardano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodell?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, the appointment is hereby approved. Mechanical Board may have a motion, please.
Council President, I move to approve the new appointment of Gregory Millich.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's been moved a second to approve Mr. Millich to the Mechanical Board. Any other discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mrs. Robert?
Aye.
Mrs. M. Hoff?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Jardano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodell?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, the appointment is hereby approved. Is Mr. Millich in the room, in the chambers this evening? No, okay. Property Tax Assessment Appeal Board may have a motion.
Council President, I move to approve the reappointment of Shaq, Shaquena Roberts?
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's been moved a second to approve Ms. Roberts to the Property Tax Assessment Board. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mrs. Robert?
Aye.
Mrs. M. Hoff?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Jardano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodell?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, the appointment is hereby approved. Police Accountability Board may have a motion.
Council President, I move to approve the appointment of Terry Lee Hunt, Jr.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's been moved a second to approve Mr. Hunt to the Police Accountability Board. Is there any discussion? Ms. Robert?
Yes, I spoke to Mr. Hunt yesterday for a very long time, looking at his resume, and then having some of the similar factors. We talked about juvenile services and other things. He just came into my district and really wants to help out the community as a whole, and so I definitely thought he was an appropriate person for the board.
I couldn't agree more. He's an outstanding individual with a tremendous amount of experience. Anyone else? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mrs. Robert?
Aye.
Mrs. M. Hoff?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Jardano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodell?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, the appointment is hereby approved? Oh, there he is. Terry?
Nice to see you, everybody.
Thanks for coming this evening. Six special presentations tonight. We're very honored to have members of the Maryland Association of Counties, a Mako, Mr. Sanderson, and Mr. Wilson here this evening. How are you, gentlemen? Good, good to see you. We appreciate you making the trip up.
Yeah, actually, I zoomed my meeting as I was coming up from Queen Anne's County, so. My second one tonight, but yes, Council President, Council members, thank you for having us tonight. As I said, I'm Jack Wilson, I'm this year's Mako President, and to my right is Mr. Michael Sanderson, our Executive Director. That's a tough act to follow, that's all I got to say, and the good news is, we can't sing, so we'll not have to deal with any of that. So you are, I believe this takes us over to fifty percent marker, pretty close in terms of visits. We started out right after session ended, and then for the first probably seven or eight, we kind of kept the focus on what happened in the previous session, but now we're kind of pivoting because we're just around the corner from another session. So Michael kind of brings some high-level stuff of what may be coming, but also kind of gives a little bit of a look back as to where we came from this year. For those that spent time in Annapolis, it was a different year in Annapolis by all regards. So without further ado, I'm respectful of your time, so I will let Michael take it away.
Thank you all very much for the opportunity to join us this evening. I'm Michael Sanderson, Director of the Maryland Association of Counties. We support, represent all the services that county governments provide to every Marylander, do so in a variety of ways, including advocacy on policy issues in Annapolis, which I'll focus on a fair amount this evening. I want to economize on time and talk about a few high notes, and then make a quick mention of an item that never made the high notes, but kind of should have with a, we'll need some good news at the end because a lot of the stuff is not great. As a practical matter, let me run through a few things. I shared with you a packet. It's a little snapshot from the last legislative session, which was a difficult one for state leaders and difficult for counties. I'll speak to a few things that are either in the packet or elsewhere, but I want to focus on issues that we're still in the middle of. I'll start with fiscal issues and the sort of uncertainty around our relationship with the federal government. This could be an hour-long presentation, I'm going to give you a quick snapshot, but if you want to get in deeper, we can get into questions if you'd like. The state ended up with a really large-scale problem on their hands coming into this last session, to the tune of three billion dollars. State general fund budget's about twenty-six billion, so a three-billion-dollar shortfall is a big number. That's not nip and tuck, that's full-on surgery sort of things. Over the course of the ninety-day session, they kept pushing decisions back. A lot of uncertainty with federal relationships and other things like that made a tricky budget even tougher. At the end of the line, a big fiscal package designed to sort of get the state through a couple of years. It included a number of tax increases, it included some cutbacks in the state, not topping off some special funds and not doing some things they might otherwise have done. They did squeeze local governments to the tune of about a hundred-and-fifty million dollars. Not really thrilled with a particular flavor that has emerged as the new favorite in Annapolis. Forgive me for this illustration, but let's say the state leaders knew they needed, you know, we have a two, three-billion-dollar problem, and we need to look to local governments for a hundred-million dollars. There's only so many places where the state sends cash to the counties to support services we deliver locally. One of them would be like local health departments. They could have zeroed out all the state funding, gone to local health departments, and saved about a hundred-million bucks. But imagine that headline, like backing off on public health, we're just a few years out of this, you know, this terrible pandemic and so forth. It would seem like a terrible headline you'd get for saying, we're going to turn our backs on public health and preparedness and so forth. But instead, instead of cutting a program, you just shift the costs. Turns out, there's a cost increase in the cost of teacher pensions. The state provides the funding for teacher pensions, some of that is actually baked into the school budget that you support, but when that cost went up, their analysts said, well, how about we just share some of those costs with the counties? We'll invoice the counties for some of the cost of teacher pensions. So when they did that, they talked about doing all of it, they ended up doing half of it, that's a ninety-three-million-dollar cut that nobody understands. The only stakeholder there, it didn't say the pensions are going to be thinner, it didn't leave the teachers holding the bag, it just left the counties paying an invoice for a function that we've never supported before. So the share for each jurisdiction, every county budget just was thinner by that amount because you had a new mouth to feed. I don't love how politically expedient that is for Annapolis, to just say, let's keep doing the thing, and we'll have somebody else pick up the cost. I don't think it's unfair. The funny thing is, our Annapolis leaders also don't think it's unfair when the federal government puts a similar squeeze on them, when the federal government says, we're going to shift costs for administering the SNAP program, the old food stamps, or for managing Medicaid, which is a state and federal partnership. The states correctly cry foul and say, that's not fair to shift those costs onto the states, but the shell game at the intergovernmental level sadly is alive and well. So that was part of what came out of this last circumstance. The plan back in April was, we're going to get through a couple of years and not have to have another, another series of tough budgets and decisions in the twenty-sixth session. It might be a variety of motivations for having a relatively calm year and then the one ahead. We'll see how well that plays out. We see a little bit of softness in the economy right now. There was a jobs report nationally last week that was a little soft, suggesting we may be teetering on a weak economy, job side and so forth. We have economists looking at the state of Maryland and saying, we're the state most directly affected by changes at the federal level with their workforce and commitments and so forth. So Maryland's in a possibly weak spot fiscally, and that's never a good circumstance to be in. So that's kind of where we are at the moment, a fair amount of uncertainty, even on the heels of a pretty big resolution that was tough to get through just this past legislative session. Related to that, on the fiscal front, the state has been funding its own blueprint, the ten-year plan to ramp up our expectations for education, that has a pretty big price tag for the state and for the counties. You're already feeling it in your budget, but the state hasn't been feeling it because the state has an education trust fund with casino revenues and some other things basically set aside by constitutional amendment. Voters spoke first and built up a balance before the blueprint got up and running. So they've had a piggy bank to pay for their share of the blueprint, up through FY twenty-six now. FY twenty-seven, next year, it's basically paid for, and it's the following year is when the state runs out of cash and needs to start absorbing the cost of the blueprint in their own general fund budget. That's when their forecast goes from being fine to two or three billion dollars upside down once again. So we're not really out of this long term quite yet. Now, a big pickup in the economy could help on that front, you know, revenue growth back to four, five, six percent like we used to see in good old days, that could happen, but at the moment, the forecasts are not really strong. Education is a part of that, but I don't think it's likely we'll see a really, a real focus on the blueprint this coming legislative session. There is an element in the ten-year plan to take a look at how things are going, sort of functionally, operationally, looking at outcomes and so forth. That's supposed to be in policy leaders' hands by the end of next year, so it probably tees up a where are we halfway through conversation in the two thousand and twenty-seven legislative session. So if you're thinking, where's the wind blowing on this big education initiative and what it means for policy and for outcomes for our kids and for budgets at the state and county level, the big show is probably fifteen months away, not three months away. I'll speak on a couple, they're dollars issues, but they're also broader than that, and then see if there's other things you want to get into. I think housing, presence of affordable housing and housing in almost every strata, we're short in our state. Depends on what report you read, but we're short tens of thousands of units of housing. There's going to be continued focus on that area, particularly in the central part of the state, but some of that debate is about local permitting and approvals and processing and so forth. Some of that is kind of out of our hands. The public sector can only do so much about seven percent mortgages are just a different affordability universe than the three percent mortgages we had just a few years ago. So some of these things are kind of out of our hands, but I think we will see the governor and legislative leaders want to engage on housing, local policies, and trying to mesh those desirable outcomes with the kind of community input that keeps things on track locally. Want to find a marriage between those two, those two competing ideas potentially. And I'll just mention one other topic that has come up in a number of our visits, and I want to build it into our comment, even though, even though most of this is not really county government stuff, we're in the middle of something of a perfect storm on energy issues. And a number of things happening at once. We have an awful lot of generation stock that is sort of reaching the end of its natural life. America did a whole lot of building of generation plants in the fifties, sixties, seventies, and kind of into the eighties, and then sort of took a generation-long break on building out generation capacity. And lo and behold, just as we're seeing a lot of old plants be scheduled to be mothballed, we're seeing a massive spike in demand for energy as a result of everyone's fascination with artificial intelligence. And the quick request on your phone when you say Google Directions to something, or ask me, what time is the show on tonight, or whatever, when it's an AI results, you're using twenty to fifty times more electricity for getting a well-researched resource. What that's turning into is a demand for big data centers that use giant gulps of energy and these- What that's turning into is a demand for big data centers that use giant gulps of energy, and the statistics are staggering. We see up north of us in Pennsylvania, they're talking about bringing Three Mile Island back online so it can serve not the city of Pittsburgh, but take all that energy and just serve three or four data centers on site. The growth in AI-driving data centers has made a hockey stick out of our old projections on what electricity needs in Maryland and across our multi-state region look like. At the same time, Maryland has a lot of ambitions to do things clean and to have our portfolio be renewable, and that is another contributing factor to making this tougher than we've ever seen. The last capacity auction had a 28% increase, and the guess is, the next one will be even higher than that. So folks are bracing for higher rates, and we're in a spot where generation is supposed to be deregulated, and that leaves the public sector with less ability to affect it than might have been the case some years ago. So that's going to be another hot topic. Some of that with citing of solar facilities and so forth is kind of a county issue. A lot of that is kind of above our pay grade, but still very much in the minds of Annapolis leaders. Other topics discussed in this packet, I won't get into, but most of these things are drawn from our Conduit Street blog. We run a podcast as well, trying to cover all the issues that affect county governments, state and public policy and that sort of thing. But we are happy to take your questions or field comments if you've got them for us. Appreciate your time.
Well, first of all, Michael, again, let me thank you for making the trip up you and Jack. And we appreciate your presentations that we listened to and sat in at Mako, as well as your other colleagues and other electants. It's a great opportunity for us to meet other colleagues from other jurisdictions across the state and realize that we're not the only ones with the issues that you're talking about. You talked about teachers' pensions. Our county treasurer spoke at a seminar down there and asked questions about pre-K expenses coming back to Harford County or all counties. And, you know, we have had constant conversations about, you know, the need for more electric being generated here in the state of Maryland. But with that, I'm going to open it up to my colleagues. I'll start with Mr. Riley as our Mako representative.
Mike, thank you for that presentation. You hit a couple of the topics I wanted to make sure my colleagues understood. I just learned today that there's also an exit tax. Apparently, we have mirrored what New York is doing, where if you exit Maryland, you're going to have a tax. And I couldn't figure out what that number was. Do you have any idea? It started July 1?
I heard it's 6%, but I'm not sure.
Okay.
It's, that's the number that's sitting in my head from what I remember reading about.
That's what we heard too, Jack.
And then the other thing is, again, you have no control over this, but solar is a big, a big issue up in my, in my district because they've got a lot of farms. And again, the state controls most of that, that if they want to do it, no matter what, it happens. But so that's going to be a hot topic that's going to come from at least this guy that represents Mako.
Real quick, we just passed an ordinance on Queen Anne's to come in line with the solar bill, but you may want to read it. We put a little bit of a twist in there that you may be interested in looking at and possibly latching on to.
Queen Anne's?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah, I know our colleagues in Cecil are concerned about solar on prime, you know, soils, so...
It's a very widespread concern, and honestly, the, you know, the map on the eastern shore has been red-hot on this for a number of years. But as, as the demand for local clean energy goes up, the number of properties that become targets for, hey, let's, let's put in an offer and see if this is a suitable for solar is just going to continue. It's going to come into more places that are not the low-lying, flat, close to a transmission wire. Right now, that's where you go for it, but it'll just be concentric rings from there. In last year's big solar bill, which was a giant, hard-fought compromise, not great by any stretch, we did gain one particular thing. The state has preempted us through the courts, has basically said, "Electric generation is the state's business, not a local zoning matter." So we've had very little authority, especially to just say, "No, not here." But the state did put a piece in the bill saying, "For a jurisdiction who set up a priority preservation area for agriculture, if you've got that area zoned, if you get to the point where 5% of that is saturated with solar, you can start saying no." So up to that point, we had no ability to say no. At some point, it turns into, you know, when the water's up to your knees, it'll stop. It's not, that's not, that's not me spiking the football, but it's a tool we've never had until now. So there's a, maybe a silver lining on what's been a troubling issue for some time.
Mr. Janjerdanna?
Jack, Mike, thanks for coming up. So appreciate your presentation. One of the things, being an insurance agent, a lot of businesses I insure, one of the things that's come about, and it's not a bill, but it's a program, is going to be the Family Medical Leave Act that's going to be implemented starting in 2027. They've kicked it down the road a little bit. The cost of that, if you've got 15 employees or more, is going to be astronomical, okay? They're still not sure. You can't opt out of it. If you've got one employee, you've got to be in it. They don't know what 1099s are going to do. They don't know of what, you know, if you employ somebody out of state. But it's, it's looking like it's going to be quite expensive of a bill, but it's a program. It's not law, so how do we look to fight that? There, there was initially some private insurance that would cover that short-term disability. Had to be, it had to be $1,000 and give them up to 12 weeks. Now they're coming back and saying, "No on the private insurance unless they do this." I'm sure that the insurance companies are going to work for it because they, they see a win for them in doing that. But, but right now, it's, it's convoluted. They don't know when it's going to, even if they start in 2027, I guess it'll start funding in 2028. How do we combat that if it's a program and not a bill, number one? Number, that's the first one, and then I'll have another one after that, if you have any information on that whatsoever.
Happy to. And council member, you obviously speak the language here, so I appreciate that. We have actually had a couple of bills. The bill to extend it, which happened two years ago, we came in and supported it and said, "We need as much time to gear up," because county governments as employers are going to be similarly situated to private employers. This is across the board. State government, by the way, also has to do this for their employees, and while they are turning their pockets inside out, they don't have $70 million lying around to contribute toward their own, the premiums or the contributions for their own employees. That's part of the reason why this got delayed. But it got delayed by a bill. So even though the program is written into the law, they can still adjust it and tinker with it through the legislative process. So the show is in Annapolis. We had, I don't want to go super deep on this and get super technical, but we had a quirky circumstance where in the middle of the legislative session, we heard that the State Department of Labor was going to tell counties, who I think all of our counties are going to opt out of being in the state plan and effectively self-insure. You have to do an equivalent benefit, but you can manage it yourself rather than paying in a year's worth of premiums before anybody can collect a benefit. It's an obvious reason to opt out and do your own thing. I think 24 out of 24 jurisdictions are going to do that. The State Department of Labor was preparing to tell us that we were going to have to escrow a year's worth of basically our, the employer's share of payroll taxes just in case our plan didn't come together as tidily as we had promised that it would. Our answer was, we're county governments, you kind of know where we live. You can find us. So we got a special exemption on that front, but it doesn't help the bicycle shop with 30 employees who might be similarly situated. It's on hold for a couple of years. If, if this actually is going to come together in 2007 or 2008, it's a new payroll tax split by the employers and employees to provide this benefit, but it's a real, it's a real money issue.
Only, only split if it's 15 employees or less. 15 employees or more, it's the entire cost of the employer, and it's not, and it's not going to be cheap. That's where, obviously, they're going to look at the private insurance systems to offer something on that. The other, the other thing is, we, we, last year, we went up to Cecil County that had a brand, fairly new power generation plant, steam, million megawatts, all that power, Virginia, except for one, one piece is going to Delaware. But, you know, just unbelievable that they built that, co-opted, it's all going to Virginia, nothing in, nothing in Maryland, so...
And the trend is going to continue. Loudoun County, Virginia is the national hub for the data center growth. Now, they were generation one, and generation next is going to be diffusing in lots of places. But your counties just to the west are in fits and starts over the Piedmont Connection project that goes through multiple Maryland counties. We're just the belt. That's, that's, you know, Pennsylvania power being sent down to Virginia because we're all in this multi-state region. The multi-state region has served us really well, but right at the moment, it doesn't feel so hot.
And one more thing, I am seeing construction, everything related on the construction trades slowing down. Okay, so I, so I, so I am seeing that
It is.
across the board, you know, with all the clients I have, which is quite numerous. I'm hearing rumblings that they're chasing business and it's not like it was, so...
Well, I'll confirm that that's my world, is 40 years in contract as an electrician. So what I'm not seeing is, I'm seeing an uptick in service and maintenance, but what I'm not seeing is the larger meaty jobs coming out right now. There's, it's not like it was five years ago where you had a lot. And sometimes that's the economy, sometimes it shifts. It's, most of it's cyclical, but we'll see, we'll see.
Thank you.
They got to build power plants, so that'll be good for electricians. That's the way I look at it.
Yeah.
Michael, you mentioned Loudoun County. Why did everyone go there?
Cheap land back in the day, is what they said.
Cheap, cheap land, green light for regulation and getting stuff built quickly, and also really quick access to a central grid. And, and for like internet providers and so forth. Remember America Online back in the day?
AOL was based out of there.
So AOL was a Northern Virginia company, and when they showed up, they, they went huge, and they built a ton of infrastructure, and it just turned into its plug-and-play to do almost anything related to technology right in that zone. It was just a hotspot for 25 years now.
Mr. Bennett?
Hello. Good evening, and it's good to be with you both. Thank you for coming over to Harford County. I first wanted to just touch on solar a little bit. You think there could be some changes, I read, with just like the federal incentives going away on how that could impact us at a state level or a local level. Do you think there's going to be adjustments to programs like Empower Maryland anytime soon? Or do you think that that's pretty steady?
So my crystal ball is cloudy. First of all, true like electric power policy and so forth is getting beyond my portfolio. I try to play stump the band and so forth, but this is getting beyond my expertise. I will say, I think the pressure, upward pressure on electric rates is a big enough political issue that Annapolis leaders are going to try and deliver something on that front. Now, I don't know where you'd go, I don't know what you'd try and do on that front. Last year, they passed a bill and they sort of kowtowed the utilities to do a two-cycles of refunds. You're going to get a, you know, get a discount in your, in your rates and that sort of stuff. I don't know if it's something along those lines or if it's something more structural. Do you move to re-regulate the generation side where you have more ability to guide and control? I don't, I don't know. I don't know about the Empower program. I don't know about the regional greenhouse gas initiative, the larger program that we participate in with a number of other states and so forth. I think any of those could be on the table for some attention. And in an election year where the state's going to be broke, I mean, whatever version of the budget for this coming year looks like, it's not going to be one where there's 300 million bucks lying around just to spend and find new things to do. So in an election year without money to spend, trying to find wins in some indirect way becomes a high priority. Sometimes that turns into bad things for counties. In this circumstance, I don't expect that, but maybe they, you know, find a rabbit out of the hat somewhere in that side and deliver something for ratepayer relief there.
And just...
So real quick, if I could, just from the industry side that, that I live in, part of the problem you have, especially with the solar, is the fact that we don't have the middle-mile infrastructure in place today that is necessary to get, you know, 85, 90, 100-megawatt solar farms to the grid. It's going to require larger 40-to-60, 80-foot transmission lines to get it to the main grid, especially if you take the case Michael's talking about, that, you know, once they run out of the flat land that they can go after quick that's right in the two-mile window of the transmission, they get out there, and now you're going to have to put some other kind of middle-mile power grid in to get it there. And that's going to become cost prohibitive. So my sense is, unless the electric transmission companies, which in this case is BGE, your Pepco's, your Delmarvas, get in the game of starting to put up large lines to fill that gap, it's, the reality is, all of the cards are not being played, not only in Maryland, but across the country. And, you know, we're playing this game with, we can do renewables and we can put data centers in, but quite frankly, we're just not there, and we're shutting power plants down that are the perfect place to take the small, I don't know how much you know about the SMRs, we're hearing about that, it was in Annapolis. Putting those in the place of them and generating three times the capacity in the same footprint. So we're just, we're 10 years behind where we should be and looks into this seriously to make a difference in everybody's budgets for the next, at least foreseeable future, so...
Well, and I, just a real quick touch upon what you were just sharing, I really think a big piece of the answer is emphasizing gray land, brown land, and having that be used for generation. There was a city out west I was reading about, and this is just something for Mako to, to think about, where they said, "If you can get such-and-such percentage of your block to agree to doing energy reduction work on your homes and businesses along with generation work, so, you know, 15 of your neighbors are going to get insulation put in and solar put on, and for all your individual homes, we'll provide grant funding to reduce the overall cost for everybody." Because the idea is, you get one insulation guy in who does the whole block, one solar guy in who does the whole block. And I think that's one way to get at scale without, you know, because like I got solar on my home, but that reduced my grid strain that I produce for everybody else rather than my electricity going back to BG&E to, you know, which is what ends up happening with those mega farms. It creates a whole other problem that has to be solved. So that's just something to think about, like, you know, how do we creatively say, "Put it on rooftops, on gray space, on parking lots, on highway medians versus..." So, and then my second question I want to ask is, a few years ago, Mako supported legislation in Annapolis that allowed for local jurisdictions to establish a vacancy tax, where basically, properties that were sitting vacant for an extended period of time could be taxed at a higher rate. And I believe Baltimore City was the first local jurisdiction to take advantage of that. I was just curious, now it's been a few years, if you have any updates on what's come of that for Baltimore City and if any other local jurisdictions have taken advantage of that? Just with the idea of, we don't want places, you know, buildings and parking lots and the like to sit vacant, and then we build on our green space, the little bit left that we have.
So on your energy comments, I think the, I think the answer is, all of the above are going to be in play. Every single thing you mentioned and more are going to be part of the next 10 years or so with energy policy. Not just Maryland, not just our region, but this is nationwide. On, on the vacancy tax, Baltimore is our only jurisdiction who's done it, but they are a special case because almost every area within the city of Baltimore is a candidate for growth, untapped growth. And not any other jurisdiction is as uniformed that way. So I think for another jurisdiction to take it up, you almost would think of it like an enterprise zone, where you draw boundaries and say, "Here's some places where we'd like to see more residential growth or more mixed use and so forth," and whether it's, you know, close to transit or other places like that, but not there. We don't want to, we don't want to create the same incentives in a cornfield
Right.
that you do in the old shopping mall zone, right? So I think that's probably going to be the next wave, is places saying, not, not to do it statewide or countywide, but to pick this eighth of the county and saying, "That's the right place to use a tool like that." That's my best guess is how this will go.
Have they seen success in Baltimore City? Have they shared?
I think it's too soon to say.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Ms. Emo?
Hi, good mor, uh, good evening. I'm already in tomorrow. So I've recently been in meetings with BG&E because the Brandon Shores mitigation project goes straight through my district. The community obviously has a ton of concerns about EMF and various other property value concerns. When I spoke with BGE, I said, you know, "We just had these huge lines installed through our district in the last five years. Now they're talking about putting in another lines." And I asked them what happens five years from there, and they didn't have an answer for me. And so we talk about putting up these huge power lines to solve, put a Band-Aid on something that could have long-term effects on communities. But what do you guys predict to be five years from that?
If I was going to guess, I've honestly, Michael touched on it a bit, is, and it should actually be within the energy code nationally, and that's co-location for these large energy eaters like Loudoun County. Though, before you build the next data...
Though, before you build the next data center, they should be required to have their power generation onsite to cover their power generation. Because I just did a, a small little snippet, I looked at Trade Point Atlantic, and you've seen the old best deal, you've seen how that's built out. When that was shut down and they were kinda mothballing it, the amount of power that was back on the grid because that was offline was tremendous. I mean, Brandon Shores was running it like sixty percent, I believe, at one point. And now you have it to where Brandon Shores, you just had the brownouts, what, two weeks ago, I guess, through Anaronda County, because Trade Point Atlantic is now built back up. Trade Point Atlantic was a prime place that they should have had that requirement in place and said, look, let's put an SMR right in the middle. And then that stays off the grid, it's co-located. I think co-location, to Michael's point about everything's on the table, I think that's one of the large things you gotta start looking at from a zoning and implementation standpoint, so that these big power suckers don't get a chance to get on the grid and create the havoc that a lot of Mark Great, and especially in Maryland, because we don't. I think Frederick County's the only one right now that has approved a, a center, right?
Right.
Yeah, so, we're, we're, like he said, we're tip of the iceberg here in Maryland on how many of those data centers are gonna be here.
By the way, good news, the Frederick County Data Center is being built on a brown field. So these are areas that have, that have suffered like, you know, pollution from industrial contaminants and so forth. In a lot of cases, there's no way to turn them around and turn them into viable commercially camp in a park or a school there, that sort of thing. Data center, perfect.
Anyone else? Uh, Michael Jack, thanks for making the trip up. We'll look forward to seeing you December, right?
Yep.
Yep, all right. Thank you, guys. Thank you. Agenda number seven, approval of minutes, legislative day twenty-five dash zero twenty-two, September second, twenty-twenty-five. Are there any corrections to the minutes? There being no corrections, the minutes stand approved. Eight, introduction and consideration of resolutions. Mr. Janjerdano, please read Bill twenty-five dash, I'm sorry, there are none. Nine, introduction of bills. Must have led you right on that, weren't you?
Well, Tony was gonna be confused because there's no resolution.
That's typical, that's typical. Nine, introduction of bills, Bill twenty-five dash zero zero nine, chapter two sixty-eight of the Harford County Code, section two sixty-eight, twenty-one A, final plat article. Um, Mr. Janjerdano.
Introduced by Ca- uh, Bill twenty-five dash zero zero nine, chapter two sixty-eight of the Harford County Code, section two sixty-eight dash twenty-one A, final plat, article five is introduced. Introduced by Councilmember Boyle Sadows, Councilmembers Robert, Riley, Janjerdano, and Council Imhoff. An act to re-appeal and reenact with amendments, section two sixty-eight dash twenty-one A, the final plat of article five, the final subdivision plat of chapter two sixty-eight subdivision regulations of the Harford County Code, as amended to allow final plats to be prepared on sheets at least twenty-four inches by twenty inches in size, but no larger than twenty-four inches by thirty-six inches in size, and generally relating to subdivision regulations. Public hearing scheduled on Tuesday, October fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five, seven PM, and in these council chambers. Bill twenty-five dash zero ten, Police Accountability Board as introduced. Introduced by Council President Vincentius, requested the county executive. An act to re-appeal and reenact with amendments, section nine dash one thirty-six establishment. Membership to repeal and reenact with amendments, section nine dash one thirty-seven. Meetings, budgets, and records, all of article twenty-two, Harford County Police Accountability Board of Part Three. Author- authoritative boards and commissions of chapter nine, boards, commissions, councils, and agencies of the Harford County Code as amended to provide that the county, that the county executive shall appoint membership and a chair to the board subject to the confirmation of county council. To provide that the county executive shall propose the budget and assign staff for the board as needed, and generally related to the Police Accountability Board. Public hearing scheduled on Tuesday, October fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five, at seven PM in these council chambers.
Thank you. Agenda ten, introduction and consideration of amendments, we have none. Eleven, call for final reading of bills, we have none. Twelve, enrollment of bills, none. Thirteen, unfinished business, none. Fourteen, new business, Harford County Public Schools Budget Transfer. Ms. Judd, Mr. Clark? Good evening.
Thank you for adding us to your agenda this evening. We were here in May to do our end-of-year interstate category transfers, and when we finalized our FY twenty-five numbers, we were off in a few categories that required us to do some additional transfers. It's not new money, it's just moving money in between different categories. So we had our board approve that last night. We're asking you all to approve it. By state law, we are not allowed to be, you know, over in any category, and then we'll ask the county executive to approve it, and it will go back to the state at that point, and we can finish our audit and hopefully put all that to bed. So, Mr. Clark, if you can go through the details of that, and we'll answer any questions you have.
Sure. Mako couldn't have teed us up better. The one spot that we're over is category ten, which is operations, and that was electricity. Our electricity bills in May and June came in five hundred and four hundred thousand dollars more than I had projected. We're gonna see that increase, as they said, over the next few years, unfortunately. So anyways, we had a special education, we needed to get about two hundred and nine thousand dollars into that one, so we're asking for a transfer of two hundred and twenty-five into classroom substitutes for our teachers. Student health services, we were over by, I think, fourteen hundred and sixty dollars, so we're asking for twenty-five hundred dollars into registered nurse substitutes, that, that line item. The electricity, as I said, six hundred and seventy-five thousand, and then maintenance, that's similar to our operations. We were over by about twenty-four hundred dollars, so we're asking for three thousand dollars in a contracted services line. When we came to you in the spring, we moved two and a half million dollars into textbooks and instructional supplies. Some of that we didn't need, so that's gonna be the area that we're asking it to come from, instructional supplies and materials, textbooks. So the total transfer would be nine hundred and five thousand, five hundred dollars, and we'll entertain any questions that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Anyone? Mr. Janjerdano?
Mr. Clark, so half a million dollar increase on electricity, what are you projecting for next year? Have you projected yet?
Well, if, if you figure next year being the year we're currently in, we added two-point-nine-eight million dollars, so almost three million. It was a thirty-three percent increase on a nine million dollar base. I hadn't heard that the next one was gonna be twenty-eight percent, but that's not very, uh, that's not gonna be very fun for me. So you're probably looking at another three million. So within two fiscal years, you're going from nine million to twelve to fifteen million? Just on one line item in a budget, and I would assume that the county is also gonna see that.
Is there any efficiencies that can be done across the board with anything was?
We do. We have, we have automatic lights turn off, we have junk, uh, contracts with Johnson Controls for electrical monitoring and shutting off, and we shut down over long weekends. We send out to our chief custodian or building, building engineers a list of things to do to make sure they're shutting down things that don't need to be on.
So I know BG&E, obviously, and you probably guys have done that, but are all the schools LED lights now? And if they're not, why? Because I know BG&E will pay for that conversion companies there, because I've talked to some local businesses, they're, they're paying a hundred percent to convert them into LED lights.
We've done a lot of that. I know our operations department has a whole list of things that they've worked through. I'd have to confirm if all of it is done, but I am pretty sure that they've been through all of it. That's been something.
Like to know that, if, if, what the percentage is of schools that have all gone to LEDs, and if not, and if that's something BG&E is gonna pay for, can, can you guys look into that? You know, like, like in the, in the, in the private sector, that's what they're looking to do still. They're, they're pushing that because they're paying for the.
Right.
Total change.
As I've said to many people, if you just look at your home electricity usage, that, you know, or costs that's gone up, mine's gone up by at least thirty-five percent. I can't get anybody in the house to turn a light off. I'm trying.
Change them all to LEDs. Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Bennett.
Hello, good evening, good to be with you all. I just wanted to ask, because, you know, energy is one of those pieces of the budget that's not really exciting or thrilling, you know. Having the lights turn on isn't going to boost outcomes, but not having lights is gonna be a deterrent to reading a book, for instance. But, um, do you have a sense of any schools that might be energy sinks, where maybe we're having more energy expenses than comparable schools, where, you know, there might be issues of efficiency or, or the like? Just trying to think through future capital expenses or projects that could help reduce energy expense.
So we're developing the capital budget now, and I would imagine that there will be some things in there as far as, you know.
Insulation.
Correct.
Closing gaps in doors.
I can have our Assistant Superintendent of Operations, you know, do a summary and send something over for you all, so you have an idea. You know, our older buildings, obviously, they're, they're gonna be more inefficient. You know, we've done some upgrades and enhancements to many of those, but it's still not the new building, you know, with all of the efficiencies that you can possibly get. So there certainly struggles in certain buildings, but I'll see. I know, like I said, we've, we know we've done a lot of work, but we don't know the specifics.
And then I know a few years ago, you, as a Board of Education, were considering hiring a company that would help with pinpointing some of those things. Has there been any future conversations around something similar to that, you know, somebody to come in and help provide those audits?
I do think that there's discussion, I don't know the.
Okay.
Status of that at this point.
Thank you.
Mr. Riley?
Yes, two questions. First, I see you doubled in substitutes, the expense there. Is it because we don't have enough teachers and so you need all these subs? I'm, I'm just trying to figure why I doubled.
Well, substitutes, it's, it's one of those unknowns. So you, we could have two, two or three teachers that fall under that category, go to, go out on a Family Medical Leave Act for, and require a long-term sub. So they're, we're paying their salary while we're paying a substitute. And then when we have our just daily subs, when a teacher either calls out sick, has a family emergency, something like that. So it, it just happened that that specific line item of our special education teacher classroom substitutes was two hundred and nine thousand dollars over budget. Next year, it could be a hundred thousand dollars under budget. It's just one of those ones that's, that's really tricky to predict. Mr. Riley?
And the other thing I can, I get a lot of complaints at North Harford Middle, the lights are too bright on the parking lot, so if you wanna save electricity, you turn them off. You make the neighbors happy and save some money.
I think the same thing, but then you have to think about the safety too, you know. I, I hear it all the time too, believe me.
Thank you.
Ms. Emhoff?
Good evening. I feel like back in June, there was another ask for an additional five hundred thousand dollars for special education services. Is that correct?
Yes, I think that was part of the transfer that we did at that time. Special education is a high-need area in our budget, and it is increasing every year, so.
What, what do you contribute to that? Is it just more knowledge about special education needs? Is it changing populations? Is it additional services?
I think it's changing populations. So we also have conversations, you know, particularly in Harford County. Our programs for special education are very strong, and we believe that there's families that potentially are moving here in order to access the services that we have. So, but across the state, probably across the country, special education costs are rising, and there's more needs of all of our students, so.
What, what is the funding going towards, towards like more staffing, towards more resources, related services?
All of the above.
Yeah, one of the biggest cost drivers is our non-public placements. So if we can't provide the services for that particular student.
I work in, I work into non-public, so I'm very familiar.
That's going up. Interestingly enough, Mako, I don't know if they picked up on this one or not, but the state changed the non-public split. So we have to pay the first three hundred percent, which is about twenty-five thousand dollars for that student, and then after that, currently, or I should say previously, in FY twenty-five and previously, the state would pick up seventy cents on every dollar after that, threshold was met, they dropped it to sixty, forty, and next year, it's going to fifty, fifty. That's gonna be about a million to a million and a half dollars increase in our budget that the state used to pay for. So I'm right with Mako when it'd be really easy for me to balance my budget if I could shift half my mortgage to somebody else to pay. You know, and that irritates me when they say they balanced their budget, but they shifted, what, three-point-eight in teachers' pensions? The blueprint's driving teacher salaries. Did they not think that teacher pension costs were gonna go up? They're based off of teacher salaries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Emhoff. Anyone else? All right, with no other questions. Mr. Janjerdano?
Council President, I move to approve the budget transfer.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Emhoff. Could move in a second to approve the budget transfer, or any other discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mrs. Robert?
Aye.
Mrs. Emhoff?
Aye.
Mr. Janjerdano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bullside?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Being seven votes in affirmative, zero in a negative, the budget transfer is hereby approved. Thanks for coming.
Thank you very much.
Agenda item number seventeen, comments and input for attending citizens.
We have two this evening, Mr. President. Gina Krieger, followed by Brianna Coleman.
Good evening, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Hi, Gina Krieger, seven oh four Conley Farms Road, Foston, Maryland, two one oh four seven. Good evening, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here to ask for stronger accountability, transparency, and action when it comes to animal welfare in Harford County. First, accountability and transparency. The Humane Society currently posts statistics, but what's missing is the most important measure of success, the live release rate. This is the percentage of animals who leave the shelter alive through adoption, transfer, or return to their families. Without posting this number monthly, the public has no clear picture of how our shelter is truly performing. I urge you to require the Humane Society to publish the live release rate every month alongside the other statistics they provide. This is a simple but powerful step toward transparency. Second, spay and neuter access. Harford County is facing a growing problem of pet overpopulation, and families are struggling with rising veterinary costs. Our municipal shelters should be empowered to directly offer low-cost spay and neuter services to the public. To make this possible, I ask you to amend the county code so the shelter can provide these life-saving services affordably. This would not only reduce intake at the shelter, it would also prevent thousands of unwanted litters in the community. Finally, community cats. We know trap-neuter return is the humane and effective way to manage community cat populations. Baltimore County has already set a strong, strong example by requiring residents who feed community cats to work with organizations to have them sterilized. Harford County should follow their lead by supporting and promoting free TNR programs so that people who are already feeding cats can do so responsibly, and with the county's backing. In closing, I'm asking for three straightforward changes. Post the live release rate monthly, allow the shelter to offer affordable spay and neuter services, and support free TNR with a reasonable feeding policy. These actions will save taxpayer dollars, reduce shelter intake, and most importantly, save animal lives. Harford deserves a shelter system we can be proud of, not one we have to question. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Good evening, Brianna Coleman, twenty-three forty-seven Ingle Road in Foston. I'm not gonna sing and I'm not gonna talk about cats. I'm here to talk about impact fees. I wanted to share a positive update regarding the recent adjustments to the Harford County's impact fee structure. In the June Adequate Public Facilities Board meeting, the county treasurer reported a notable increase in revenue from impact fees, directly benefiting dedicated funding for school capital projects. While this is a step in the right direction, further action is needed. As you know, state law still caps the amount Harford County can charge, limiting our ability to fully address school facility needs. Despite recent progress, Harford County continues to face significant funding shortfalls, particularly due to two decades of stagnant fund, fees. With your help, we were able to update the amount at the county level, but because of state law, we are still not collecting enough to cover the cost a student has on our school system. You are familiar with the Harford Academy Project, I'm sure. Did you know that the school is expected to cost a hundred and eighty million dollars, with only fifty million anticipated from the state, further increasing our debt burden, which is currently around forty-two million dollars? Harford County's impact fee enabling legislation was enacted by the state in two thousand and four, and it hasn't been updated since. Raising the cap to align with the recent impact fee study seems reasonable to me. I'm here today to ask for your support for this change in Annapolis, by asking the Harford County, County delegation to prioritize legislation in the twenty-twenty-six session that lifts or adjusts the caps on impact fees. This would be a critical step forward towards sustainable funding for our school infrastructure. And since I have a minute left, I just wanna talk about what they, they just came to ask for money, for the electric bills for the schools. I drive by Foston Middle School about seven times a day as I'm a mom mover, especially at night, and the lights are always on. It's something that we've talked about at our Foston cab meetings, so maybe that's something we could address with them. Thank you so much. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else, Ms. Dixon? All right, we'll move to Agenda sixteen, business from council members. Ms. Emhoff? Ms. Emhoff?
All right. So I'd just like to take a moment to recognize that later this week will mark the anniversary of September eleventh. As the day approaches, let us remember the lives lost and honor the bravery of the first responder service members and citizens who showed extraordinary courage on that day and ever since. Just a reminder, September is National Recovery Month, and then also National Suicide Prevention Month, and then National Preparedness Month. Upcoming, well, events that I've recently, and meetings I've attended, as I shared, I've already been meeting with BGE, and I have an ongoing list of meetings with them to try to assess their needs as where, as well as community needs as well. On September sixth, I attended the We All Serve Hike at Poplar Grove Park. It's in recognition of Suicide Prevention Month, promoting healthy connections for veterans, military, their families, and friends. September eighth, I attended the Edgewood Joppa, Joppa Town Community Advisory Board meeting, and I was able to meet with several constituents, and I look forward to actually being able to have some follow-up meetings with them as well. Just some reminders for some upcoming events. September eleventh, Abingdon-Emberton Academy meeting is occurring at six thirty P.M. at the Abingdon Fire Hall. September fourteenth is the Bel Air Festival of the Arts in Shamrock Park. It's also the same day as the Bel Air Free Air Market, so Bel Air is going to be hopping on that day. September fourteenth, Music in the Meadows Summer Concert Series at Jerusalem Mill Village, and the concerts are from three P.M. to five P.M.
Thank you. Mr. Janzer-Dana?
Thank you, Council President. Today, along with a couple of my other colleagues, Nolan and Jimmy, and Council President Vincenti, we attended Hartford County Association of Realtors Award Ceremony. I was able to give a recognition to Craig Strobel, who had his office next to mine for a long time, so that was a nice honor, and congratulations to, to all the winners and the new president in coming in, and so congratulations to them. So, Raising Canes is going to be opening September sixteenth, and I'm really impressed because I was hounding the state highway to make sure that the road was fixed, not just patched for the potholes, I mean, for all the digging that they did to get Raising Canes in shape, but there was, the road had just gotten paved, brand-new all the way down. I was really disappointed when they started cutting holes and jackhammering it up, but they told me there was a bond, and they would go back and mill it and pave it, and I want to say they did an excellent job, so I'm thankful that that was done. I appreciate Raising Canes sticking to the word and getting that done. That's been a big thing for the last six years to get that road paved, and to see it torn up like that just really bothered me, so. September eleventh, we're going to have a re, a reeling for the terrorist attacks, so I think the mantra with that is, don't ever forget. I did have family members in New York. Fortunately, nobody passed away from my family, but I did have some fire department people that were there on scene, and I had some people that had, they bought bicycles and bicycled all the way back to Long Island that day and heard those stories. So CPWN was today, Chesapeake Professional Women's Network. My sister spoke on that. And then this past Saturday, the Society of Italian American had their crab feast. They had two hundred and fifty people, so that went really well. And then September twenty-sixth to the twenty-eighth is the Italian Festival at Ripken Stadium. It's a new location. It's not at the Equestrian Center, so they've geared up all kind of music events, vendors, food vendors from all over, so if you get a chance, stop by, and that's all I have. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Janzer-Dana, and Mr. Riley.
So Tony G was raising cane with raising cane. It's a, it's an unusual thing to do there, Tony. Also, congrats to all the awardees at the Hartford County Association of Realtors. That's it, Mr. President.
Thank you. Ms. Sodles?
Thank you, Council President. I, too, would like to honor those we lost on September eleventh and also reflect on the bravery and sacrifice shown that day. Last night was the Aberdeen and City Council meeting, and council members shared some exciting updates and some new businesses that are coming to the community. There is a Keep Aberdeen Beautiful Initiative, which is happening on the first Saturday of each month, April through November, at Aberdeen Festival Park. It's an opportunity to keep Aberdeen beautiful, and volunteers will even receive a free drink coupon for the Screaming Bean. If you'd like to join that, check out Aberdeen's website, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sodles. Mr. Bennett?
Hello. Good evening. You know, it's very interesting to think about with the anniversary of September eleventh coming up, that we now have, you know, schoolteachers in our schools who weren't alive on September eleventh, two thousand and one, which is just tremendous to even consider and think about. As each year, it's my responsibility to take a moment during that day and explain to my students why that day is a day that we hear about and talk about and remember. It's, it's just amazing to think how time moves. Council President and I were talking about that earlier today. I did want to also just say Ada is six months old, half a year, so time is moving quick on that, too, and she's babbling up a storm. Somebody at church said she's getting ready to be a politician, because she wouldn't stop talking all service, but life is good, and we have cab meetings all over the county coming up. Councilwoman Emhoff brought up the Abingdon-Emberton Cab Meeting on September eleventh at six thirty in the Abingdon Fire Hall. The Cresswell Community has the Churchwell-Cresswell Cab Meeting on September eighteenth at six thirty P.M. in the Churchville Rec Center. You know, cab meetings are a really awesome opportunity to engage with your community, to get information, but also to take action. You know, we've had cabs submit legislative positions to us in the past. When you're engaged with your cab, you're able to really engage in local government in a way that I think is unique and also really empowering. So I would encourage people to come out to their local cab meeting and to be able to engage with the county in a way that's different than having this giant desk separating us. So that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Ms. Robert?
Good evening. So I wanted to mention that I, too, met with our BGE representative mainly to talk about how bills are increasing and how we can help the lower-income individuals be able to face and be able to pay those bills. And we were talking a little bit about solar and a little bit about what that looks like for these individuals, and so, and families. We had our Edgewood Farmers Market on Sunday, September seventh. It keeps, seems to be growing and getting bigger and bigger, and our, our food is, the vegetables are planting, and we have great farming people helping every day and volunteering to do that. We had the cab meeting yesterday, our Edgewood Joppa, Joppa Town Community Advisory Board meeting, and that went well. Mr. Magnus advised everyone about what's coming our way as far as the Joppa Rec Center, and that we'll get started on with the fields first, and then we'll figure out where things lie next for the buildings. I also advise that we have officially, there's been a lease signed at the Woodbridge Center, so we will have a trampoline park. It is supposed to be opening sometime this fall. We just don't know a date and, and time yet. I also attended the Hartford County Realtors Association Award Ceremony, and congratulations to those recipients, as well as in my, my legislative aide was attending the Hartford County Hope for Homeless Alliance at the same time, because we're trying to work out a lot of issues and initiatives for homelessness in our area. And Friday is the Symposium on Addiction and Recovery at Mountain Christian. I will be there. And finally, on September thirtieth, for the Edgewood Community, Seven Brew Coffee Shop is proposing to have a listening session, and it'll be at the Edgewood Library from six P.M. to eight P.M. for input on the removal of the area of an existing parking lot in order to make lanes for drive-through. And I, too, would like to remember September eleventh. I remember where I was. I was a therapist back then at the time in Baltimore City, and my husband was law enforcement in New York. So there's lots of memories there, and so I'd like to make sure that everyone always remembers what that means for those who have lost loved ones.
Thank you, Ms. Robert. We'll move to Agenda item number fifteen, business from the President. And, you know, we talk about September eleventh, and, you know, we have a lot of great memories in our life as far as children's births and things like that, but a couple of tragic events like nine eleven. I, I, you know, I hate to say, but I remember Kennedy's assassination as well, so where I was that day, just like nine eleven, where I was that day. So I, too, no, I, too, want to honor their memory, and, but I also want to give a shout out to Ms. Cantos and Ms. Harris-Berry for recognizing the city of Havering Grace's Farmer's Market this past Saturday for their thirtieth anniversary through the community projects of Havering Grace. You guys did a great job. I appreciate that very much. Also, yesterday, the Aberdeen Rotary Club held their thirty-fifth annual Curtis Morgan Golf Tournament. It was extremely well-attended. It was a beautiful day, and I'm sure they raised a good bit of money for that club. Saturday, I was on the Eastern Shore in Galena for a decoy show, and at that decoy show, my, my neighbors and dear friends, the boats, both Bernie and Brian were there, had to travel sixty miles to see my neighbors, but, so Bernie came up to me and gave me a copy of his new book that he did, and it's a lifetime of history, collecting canning history and preserving our agricultural heritage and rural legacy through a book that he did. I highly recommend it if you're into any type ag. It's all about canning labels, cans themselves, the shipping containers that were made here locally, the, the product that was raised and, and harvested here locally. I want to give a shout out to his two co-authors, Henry Peaton and Jack Shagnit. They, too, have done a large amount of books, I think seventeen volumes of local Hartford County history, all about farms and things of that nature, and it's just a great read. Bernie's, his great-grandfather in the mid eighteen hundreds was involved in canning in Churchville, and, and I, as I always say, I'm a proud member of a rural community, a farming community. I'm very proud of my votes over the last ten years, or over the last eleven years, preserving over ten thousand acres here in Hartford County and basically saving over a hundred farms, which goes a long way to preserve our ag heritage and rural legacy, as I said. But it's a great read. I highly recommend it for those that are interested. And with that, we'll adjourn this meeting. Thank you.